I'd like to call order the regular board meeting of the Corrada Recreation and Park District on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019 at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Megan Siren from the city of Rancho Cordova. And then, following the pledge, Manager Taylor will say a few words.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is my pleasure to say a few wonderful things about Megan. Megan Siren worked for the city of Rancho Cordova, and she was one of two members that were on our pool design committee. And she attended all of those meetings and has been a great, has had a lot of great input to give us, and making sure that, you know, the city council's objectives were, continued to be addressed as part of their $3.4 million contribution. And then she very nicely agreed to be on our selection panel for our construction manager for the pool, which you have in your packet tonight. So she's been a big part of our project, and we're really happy that she's here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been fun.
All right. How about roll call?
Director Reyes?
Here.
Director Lineback?
Here.
Secretary Sloan?
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Here.
And Chair Yearwood?
Here.
All right. Let's see here. Board disclosures on any action items? Anybody have anything they want to confess to? All right. Well, then we'll move on to comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And at this time, I do not have any speaker cards.
Well, all right. Looks like we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have seven items for your consideration.
Well, all right. Anybody have any questions or anything about any of the items?
Yes, I would actually like a little clarification on Item C4, which is the staff report about the Hagan ADA improvements. In the background, it stipulates that part of the improvements was replacing a non-compliant asphalt path with stairs. And that sort of struck me as odd, because I wouldn't consider stairs to be ADA compliant. So I'm wondering if we could have a little clarity about that.
I'm going to have Christina come up and explain that, please.
Great.
So, the purpose of all the improvements for the Hagan ADA project was to make sure that we are entirely compliant within that site. And that included the upgrades to the parking lot, making sure that the accessible parking was up to current code, making sure we were providing a passenger loading zone in the turnaround, providing a pathway or a portion of a pathway that eventually we hope that continues into the park. And currently, we have an existing accessible route of travel from the parking all the way to the community buildings, and eventually that'll extend to the pool beyond. Where we replaced asphalt with a stair was an existing 20% to 30% slope. It was an unsafe condition, an asphalt pathway. It was unsafe for able-bodied people. So, we, not having any room within that vegetation, instead of just removing it, where we knew people would try to get down and cut through that pathway anyway, we replaced it with a code-compliant stairway that would provide able-bodied people access, and then folks with wheelchairs would have access to Hagan along the accessible route.
Thank you. It was just that when I read it, a big question mark.
Yeah, I can see where that question was.
Thank you.
Christina, is that the one directly outside of Building 2, the back door of Building 2?
Correct.
Okay. So it's that one, when you look out there by the fireplace, that just nose-dived?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Looked good to me. Just kidding. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right. Anybody care to?
I'll move that we, I'll move that we accept the consent calendar Items C1 through C7 as presented by Sy.
Motion by Director Reyes. Second?
Second.
Second by Director Reyes. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
All right, I guess we'll move on to presentations.
Thank you. Item D1 is an introduction to Tammy Rominger, our new Park Services Supervisor 2. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Park Services Superintendent Jim Morales to do the introduction.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood and members of the board. It's with great pleasure that I introduce to you the newest member of our Park Services Department, Park Services Supervisor 2 Tammy Rominger. Tammy has over 24 years of landscape supervisor experience, most recently as a park superintendent at the city of Sacramento. Excuse me. Tammy has extensive knowledge when it comes to general landscaping, including managing over 220 parks and over 3,000 acres. Along with her experience in management, Tammy also holds a qualified applicator's certificate. She's a certified green gardener, and is a development and operations region one representative for the California Parks and Recreation Society, CPRS. A little bit about the background of Tammy. She grew up in Winters, California, and her grandparents owned a 1,500-acre farm where she gained the passage, passion of her grandfather taking her out and, at a young age of about four, taking her out and letting her steer the tractor and, you know, do all the fun things, and planting, and just doing hard work out there. Her grandmother also has some fond memories of going through the, taking walks and showing her different plants and flowers and different things they had on their farm. So, with that, Tammy is our new Park Services Supervisor. One other thing that's pretty interesting is tomorrow Tammy will be taking her certified arborist exam, so we need to wish her luck on that. So, Tammy Rominger, our new Park Service Supervisor 2.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm glad to be here, and it's been an exciting, almost two months now. As you know, I missed last time because I had a midterm. And it's been exciting to get to know the city of Rancho Cordova and the park system here. And you guys have a wonderful staff here. It's been amazing. So, I told Patrick yesterday, it kind of feels like home, being here. So, I really appreciate it.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Move on to D2.
Thank you. Item D2 is a presentation by staff on marketing and communications survey data. This is an informative presentation only. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Marketing and Communications Specialist Katie Nagy Chow.
Hi, good evening. I wanted to bring to you a presentation just regarding some of the work that the Marketing Communications Department has been doing over the past year, and a couple of things that I plan to do moving forward, just to keep you guys updated on what's going on.
Wonderful.
So, I started this position a year ago. It's been gone by so quickly. And one of the first things that I did in about December of 2018 is I wanted to find out what did the community need from this position? What is their main way of, you know, being communicated with, getting their information about our services, and how can I help moving forward? So, we did find out that, you know, per industry standards, the recreation guide is the number one source of where everyone finds out about our services. Email newsletter was right up there, falling shortly behind, but that was where we were standing about a year ago. What did they want to hear from us, and how did they want to hear from us? Well, we actually found out that emails was kind of on their top list. We want to hear by email, which was a little surprising, but it was really helpful in that, you know, kind of progress moving forward. This is what we want, and so here's how I can figure out ways to give it to them. And then, secondly, we did find out also that print mail was pretty popular on that as well. They wanted flyers delivered to their residences, or postcards, or, you know, something that they can tag on their fridge, right? Anything that we can do to kind of put it right in front of them was on their priority list as well. So, moving forward as part of my next survey process is I wanted to find out, out of those, you know, this is how they want to hear from us. So, now what are they looking for, and how can we get that in front of them as well? So, in a survey that I put forth with the new recreation guide, which came out during the time that we also had a new print team, and really changed up the look from our previous guide to the first guide that was presented when I got here, and to our new guide with our new print team, we found out that 90% of individuals are looking through this guide, looking through their emails for program information. Event information was pretty close, but it was either program for information for themselves, or for a dependent. And so, noting that, moving forward in that marketing, you know, how can we get that program information out on other sources and use our guide to drive them to those sources as well? And so, some of the changes that I implemented mostly did focus on the recreation guide, which you guys have seen, and we'll get to see another one coming up this January as well. But also, a couple were on, you know, the website. That's a main source of information now, too. And so, we wanted to increase the awareness of park projects there, right? Distributing content in different places. So, if people are looking for program information in their rec guide and on social media, they have a place to get their park information and their event information on that homepage of our website. So, we're using that what's happening section right when you go to CRPD.com to have four columns, one main one horizontally and three below, to give them those updates. Part of it was the ADA project going on at Hagan, and always giving them updates on the Veterans Park Project, anything like that. It'll have a date on what that update was, so that we can keep them informed on what's going on. You know, the event calendar is continuously updated as well, and it's associated with our Facebook page, so people can find it in different forms alongside the rec guide as well. And one other main thing that you actually won't find on this is that recently we have created also a customer service business card. So, anytime we go out into the public, we have one little card, business card size, you can tuck it in a wallet, with ways to contact us. It includes our Facebook and Instagram tags, Twitter tag. It includes our customer service email, our website, and just basic general phone numbers, so that people can get ahold of us at any time. And there's a blank space on the back, so that if they have specific questions, we can always write down a specific person to contact. And so, what did this all come to? Well, we did find out that after this new guide came out, and a couple of those changes were implemented, that we did receive 100% of respondents, that we are above average or well above average in their ease of navigation, accuracy of information, customer support, and we're meeting their needs. So, in order to continue this standard that we're at right now, we want to keep moving forward with some additional changes and slight improvements. One being that we want to improve some signage and advertisements in nearby parks, because that is, again, kind of putting that print information in their face while we might not necessarily have the budget in current day to send out lots of flyers and lots of postcards to houses. We can present banners at parks that they walk by, or that are by their residences. You know, we can have flyers posted on those community centers, or on those tennis courts that are all right there. So, we're working with our new print team that also does our rec guide to include that as well. We're working on amping up a little bit of email marketing. Maybe instead of just one email newsletter a month, we'll do every other month a special edition, whether it's on aquatics coming up, you know, for the summer, or summer camps. Recently did one on the Cordova Golf Course to highlight some of the new clinics we had coming up. So, anything along those lines, that we have that avenue, we know that that's what they want, and we can send it out that way. Online calendar, again, using those event calendars to make sure program information is easily accessible. And then partnering, using those information cards, getting out in front of people, finding those businesses, or those other local partners that are going to help us, where we can maybe do some meet and greets and explain our services, showcase our services, you know, do demonstrations to those prospective participants we might be missing otherwise. And in, you know, that, we want to continue gathering their feedback, so that we keep improving. And we keep making sure that every year we're, you know, staying up to date with our communities' needs as new residents move in, other residents move out, and we have shifts in demographics. So, we'll continue monitoring the Yelp and Google and Facebook reviews, finding out what we're doing well and what we can improve on, working with the recreation team to make sure we're always giving those event and end-of-program evaluations, and, you know, continuing to use the rec guide to show something different every, biannually every guide, and giving them an opportunity to also push towards other resources that they have digitally, too. So, that's it. Any questions?
Director Reyes?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to make a comment. I wanted to tell you that the visibility has been good.
Thank you.
Your articles, your writing, it's very different. I mean, really, I have been awaiting a marketing, you know, department like this. So, it's out there. I love the one on the golf course, to see the faces. Here's new teachers. I mean, it is, I, it's just, it's in the grapevine or the Gold River Messenger. It's around. And there are multiple articles, and when staff is around, you know, we get awards, it's there. And it's very well-written. I'm really pleased. And the rec guide is really much improved. So...
Thank you so much.
It's very, thank you, because it makes it so much easier on us when we're out there, and we can say, check the website, or the rec guide. Keep it up.
Awesome. Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
Just ditto. I totally agree.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, nice job.
Very good.
So, well, I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It doesn't look like we have any committee reports or public hearings tonight, so I guess we'll move on to the regular calendar. Item G1.
Thank you. Item G1 is to authorize the general manager to execute a concessionaire services agreement with Claim Stake Brewing Company for services at the Cordova Golf Course. And I'll turn it over to Director of Parks and Recreation Jill Nuns.
Yay. Oh. Good evening, Chair Yearwood, members of the board. I am so excited tonight that we have a concessionaire for the golf course. It just feels good. So, I'm going to go through the process, kind of tell you what we did, and then answer any questions at the end. So, so, and tonight, tonight in front of you is the concessionaire services agreement with Claim Stake Brewing Company for services at the Cordova Golf Course. We worked through the process. So, we put out the RFP in June. We did not receive any proposals. So, Katie and I hit the pavement, literally hit the pavement. We went to breweries, we went to restaurants. I think it was around 30 in the end that we probably hit? Oh, 40. Look at ours. 40 in the end. Yeah, I know. It was, so we hit, you know, we hit all of the restaurants and breweries around Sacramento, not just here in the Rancho Cordova area. And then finally, after, you know, hitting those restaurants and hitting the pavement, we received three proposals. So, out of the three proposals, we ended up doing interviews in October. And after we conducted the interviews, we had an interview panel. All three of, you know, the interested parties came in, did an interview. Then we selected Claim Stake to move forward tonight to get your approval for them to be the next concessionaire. So, you're probably thinking, why Claim Stake? Why did we choose Claim Stake? Because they're amazing. They are going to bring a different feel to that golf course, and go along with our goal of just changing up the golf course industry, right? They are just, they're a brewery, and obviously, they're still going to have restaurant, we're going to have food. But they also just have this excitement to them. They really want success out at the golf course. It's going to be a destination for people to come. It's not just going to be to come and play golf at the golf course. Now, they're going to come for the brewery, and they're going to see this amazing golf course that we have, and they're going to say, hmm, maybe I want to go hit some balls on the driving range, or maybe I want to play golf today. So, we're super excited about that. The other thing, which is amazing about Claim Stake, is they have a music following at their brewery. And they've been doing music at their brewery for a while now, and they want to bring that to the golf course. So, what they're proposing is, is, you know, and we'll, we'll work with them through this. Remember, this is all new for both of us. We're both going to be flexible within this concessionaire, you know, agreement, and this, really, this partnership with them. But they want to bring some music festivals to the golf course, and they want to perhaps bring some brewfests to the golf course. And we would do that on the driving range. We would enter into a special use permit agreement with them, where they would pay a facility fee to have those types of events, right? So, extra additional revenue for us. And then they would take care of it all. That's something that Claim Stake would do. They would hire, you know, you know, the personnel for that, the, you know, they'd figure out the parking, all of that fun stuff. But we just think, again, that's going to highlight our golf course. People are going to start talking about the golf course. Like, have you been over to the Cordova Golf Course? They have a brewfest. How wonderful is that? People are going to start talking, and that's how our golf course is going to get back to the numbers that we've had, you know, in the past. So, super excited about that. Claim Stake, as you know, is a Rancho Cordova, their current brewery is in Rancho Cordova. They're the member of, you know, member of the Chamber of Commerce. And they just have already a built-in marketing plan for advertising their new restaurant at the Cordova Golf Course. I asked them tonight, they're in the back row back there, I asked them tonight if they have a name. Not yet. They're working on the name. They wanted to get the approval from you guys tonight first, and then they'll move forward with figuring out a name for the restaurant. Okay. So, I'm super excited about that. The other thing is, in the, in the packet that you have talks about their lease agreement. So, we would start their lease. It's a 15-month lease to start off with. It'd be, the first three months would be rent-free. This is going to give them some time for the first couple of months to make those much-needed improvements to the restaurant. We know that there's, there's some need for that. It's going to give them time to obviously start working on their marketing, start hiring staff. You know, they already have their ABC license, they're good to go with licensing, but it just gets all their ducks in a row as well. And it's the winter months. So, we're going to start the actual lease and collecting the $1,000 a month rent starting in March, and that includes those utilities. It's a no-brainer. This is an amazing opportunity for us. As you can see, we're super excited about having this brewery be our next concessionaire. I don't know. I mean, that's really it. Just super excited. I'm here to answer any questions, if you guys have any questions about the lease or the concessionaire, or Claim Stake.
Any questions? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Secretary Sloan?
And leave at 9:00, and they're a little tipsy. It's, liability falls on the restaurant, not the park district, correct?
It's part of their licensing. So, they, yeah, part of their license talks about how they serve beverages, and so that would be Claim Stake, and it's, again, something that they have currently with their brewery.
It sounds exciting, and you seem quite excited.
I am. Super excited.
Reading about it, I mean, I thought to myself, wow, you know, the brewery part of it seems to be something different, something new, something that'll get people, like you said, to come, and, you know, they want to, I know, I have some friends, I've already said, you know, after work on Friday night, they're like, oh, we're going to go just hit the brewery. So, at least we can get that going. And it seems like, it seems like they, they have their business going, so they know what it takes. I thought it was neat. I thought it was exciting. I thought the guys would go, woo! But it's a nice way to even hang out, you know? Because it's a, our course is a short course, so people can play and they can still hang out.
Woo-hoo!
So, I'm, I'm excited about it.
I want to just say one more thing. What I like about it is that it's going to attract the 21...
Yeah.
...to 35-year-olds that we drastically need out there to come and have a place to hang out in Rancho or in Rosemont. It's just, it just brings a whole different element. And it's a, I don't know if you've ever been to their one over at Off of Sunrise. It's a very family-oriented, they've got games that you can, board games, which people hardly ever play anymore. And it's, it's a great, a great place to just go and, and touch bases. And they don't have, I don't know how you guys are going to do this, but, because I know you don't have monitors or TVs at the other one, and at the golf course, you, I don't know if you're going to have that. So, that's what, your decision. Sometimes, if it's a golf tournament going on, it's, people like to watch the Masters if they're playing golf. So, you want them to come in and have a beer. That's what you want.
Their plan is to have TVs.
Okay.
And hang out.
Yes. So, even though they don't have it at their current...
And play Monopoly.
They don't have it at their current brewery, because they do, at their current brewery, right? They want people to gather. They want the TVs to be away, the social media, the phones to be tucked away. They want their current brewery to be, people just being socialized, you know, socializing with each other and getting to know each other. But they talked about that, you know, as an addition at the restaurant at the golf course, that they would have TVs to show football on Sundays, to bring people in, to have the food, to drink their amazing beer. I mean, their beer is outstanding. It's, you know, it's definitely going to be award-winning beer if it isn't already. So, they do. They know that, they're going to put the TVs in there, even though that's not part of their current brewery, you know, model.
They got things to do there with the driving range and the putting greens and...
Yeah. And we've talked about all that. You know, they're, they're even thinking about later on in the afternoon, in the evenings, maybe bringing one of, you know, their musical, you know, acts in their, a musician, or a band, or a single, you know, singer to come in and just, you know, do some, some Friday night performance. You know, whereas a little bit later on in the day, it's not going to disturb the daytime golf play. So, they have lots of great ideas, and we're really open to those ideas. And we're really open and working together to figure out how to make this work, not only for them, but for us as well. And so, it's a win-win for both the golf course, as well as for Claim Stake.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Anybody care to make a motion?
So, let's move. I'll move to the Board of Directors authorize the general manager to execute the concessionaire services agreement with Claim Stake Brewing Company for services at the Cordova Golf Course Restaurant.
Motion by Director Reyes. Second by Secretary Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
All right. Can't wait. All right. Good job, staff. Good job.
What am I supposed, what was I supposed to say? Woo-hoo, or ooh-hoo? What was that?
Woo-hoo!
Okay. All right. Well, all right. Well, I know a lot of people that go there, so I hope maybe they'll come to the golf course.
Wonderful.
All right. So, we'll move on to Item G2.
Thank you. Item G2 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-29 approving the Grantline 208 Joint Community Facilities Agreement with the city of Rancho Cordova. And I'll turn it over to Finance Manager Matt Goodell.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. All right. Mine is as exciting as a brewery, but it's pretty close. It's pretty close. So, tonight, the item I have in front of you is acknowledging a developer, Lennar Homes, to utilize an option that they can do by financing their public infrastructure at the Grantline 208 development. And where that one is located is, if you go down Douglas towards Grantline, it's just past Sunridge Park. So, it's east of Sunridge Park, and it's south of Douglas. That's where the Grantline 208 project is. Lennar Homes, on behalf of the city of Rancho Cordova, and they've already approved it, plan to exercise that option of doing a financing plan to do their infrastructure by selling special tax bonds, and then subsequently managing a Melrose Community Facilities District for the benefit of those future residents. This isn't something new. This is common practice to have roads, sewers, basically the backbone infrastructure of new development done this way. And that includes parks as well. It's not new to us either. The district has passed similar agreements. I believe the last one we did was a resolution for the Montalena Development Agreement. There is no financial obligation to the district, no benefit either, except that we do understand and know that there's going to be funding available for the park impact fees that'll be ran through this program. In the audience, we have Jack Savay here with Lennar Homes as representative. And basically, that's my report. In the audience, we have Jack Savay here with Lennar Homes as representative, and basically that's my report.
All right, any questions?
You do mention a park impact fee, is that because the district would then build the parks? So the developer would not build turnkey parks?
No, that's still on the table, so that hasn't been vetted out yet. This is just their ability to fund the development of the parks. How they're going to be built will be determined later, and if it's turnkey, they'll just receive a credit for that, but the funds will be spent towards the park development.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, anybody want to make a motion, care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 19/20-29 approving the Grantline 208 Joint Community Facilities Agreement with, with the City of Rancho Cordova for the City of Rancho Cordova Community Facilities District Number 2018-1, Grantline 208.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel, have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
No woo-hoo?
Not a brewery.
So woo-hoo.
Woo-hoo, all right. Every time we pass something, that's what we're going to have to say now, apparently. All right, we'll move on to item G3.
Thank you. Item G3 is to authorize the General Manager to publish the notice inviting bids for the construction of the Cordova Pool Replacement Project. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Manager Taylor.
We're doing a pool? What?
A pool?
Okay, I think this one might get a woo-hoo too.
It'll be a super-duper woo-hoo.
Secretary Sloan will do a part.
Okay, so we are very, very close to getting all 19 permits from six different agencies.
Woo-hoo!
Huge accomplishment. As I mentioned in my staff report to you, that, and you do have a notice inviting bids, and it does have dates in it for a bid process. We do have to push it back, unfortunately, but not by too much. At this point, we've got two outstanding approvals that we're waiting for. We just got one, we got a few more comments on November 19th that we're working through. And optimistically, and I think realistically, we should be able to go out to bid in mid-December, okay? So, and that would still allow us to bring a bid recommendation and a bid award recommendation to the board at our February board meeting, which is the way this is lined out here. I'm asking for permission tonight from you to be able to put this out to bid with the adjusted bid date so that we don't have to wait another month before we can go out to bid. So that's what the ask is for tonight. And so I just wanted to give you a few other items on the background of this project. I mean, we all have been on this long ride on this, accomplishing this project, but we have, from the original project that you folks saw in, in May of 2018, we did have to add a few items to get through the permit approval process, but it's very substantially equivalent to the project that you approved in May of 2018. We added a new fire hydrant. We had to add fire sprinklers to the new building, the pool building, because when we increased, when we added the other pool, it increased the building size just enough that we had to go get fire sprinklers. And then we, we had to widen the emergency access lane. We added an electric rolling steel emergency gate required by SAC Metro Fire. The environmental health, Sacramento County Environmental Health required that we, that, well, we had to adjust the fence location, the perimeter fence location in the grass area, or remove a bunch of large, beautiful trees, and we decided to adjust the fence. And so that added some, about $80,000 total to the cost of the project. And then in addition to that, we added the demolition of the trapezoidal pool, and we added lowering the grade where the old pool buildings were to make it a much better aesthetically pleasing site as we moved forward. So collectively, those items added about $500,000 to the project that had increased the budget. So now that we have a $9.6 million project, and that is going to be funded through a variety of elements, which is a $5 million bond, which you're, you're obviously familiar with, a $3.4 million donation from the city, some general fund contributions, and interest received on the bond. We've also had some conversations with the State Parks Office of Grants and Local Services that the, a portion of the project, the additive alternates that we're estimating to be about $320,000 will likely qualify for state Prop 68 non-competitive grant funds. So we're excited about that, we're still waiting for that detailed information to come to the district from Ogle's, and then we'll be able to complete that process. But by showing them as an additive alternate, that completes the requirements that the state will have. So we're excited about that. Let's see, if the board does approve this notice inviting bids with the adjusted dates as needed, then that will allow, allow us to help us stay on a schedule that we want to be able to bring before it's the board in February. And let's see, I guess that's it. If you folks have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Anyone have any questions?
I was a little bit confused by the sentence, collectively, these items justify the total pool project cost increase of $500,000. The project budget continues to carry a 5% construction contingency. Were you trying to say that the increase is covered by the contingency that's already built into the budget?
No. So when we set up this project budget, I included a 5% project contingency, which was for exactly this type of reason, of these additional things that have come up. And also a construction contingency, which is separate and is still being held that we haven't touched. So that won't be touched until we have unforeseen conditions that perhaps come up during the construction project.
So ultimately, I mean, even though the Prop 68 funding is probably, looks pretty good, is, we could be asked to take more money out of the general fund to complete this project then?
Yes, that's true. And, but one of the things that I mentioned in the report but didn't reiterate here is that it, this project does span several fiscal years, so there's the ability to, to make that work over time.
All right, any other questions? All right, well, I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager publish the notice inviting bids for the construction of the Cordova Pool Replacement Project.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chair Yearwood, seconded by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Woo-hoo! Yes, aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan? Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Yay!
Yay!
Hey, yay, 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 come on! That'll be good, yes. Looking good.
All right, looks like we're going to move on to item G4, and I suspect you're not going to move.
It's yours again, girl.
Thank you. Item G4 is to authorize the General Manager to execute a contract for construction management consultancy services in the amount of $249,500 with Salaber Associates Incorporated for the Cordova Pool Replacement Project. Back to Manager Taylor.
Great, okay. So on August 21st of 2019, the board authorized the release of a request for proposals for construction management services for the Cordova Pool Replacement. We received submittals from four firms. We had a five-person consultant selection committee, of which Megan was one.
Oh, listen, Mel, you can see.
Then we also had Rebecca from Recreation and myself, Christina James and John Biendo all sat on that panel. The committee's top three ranked firms were invited for interviews. And then the committee reached a consensus that Salaber and Associates was the most qualified firm to provide the construction management services for the project. A detailed scope of work is found in your board packet. And, but basically, the construction manager will be the conduit and manager of information flowing between the district, our design consultant, LPA, and the general contractor. Salaber Associates will report to me, and the district's construction inspector supervisor, John Biendo, will assist the construction manager as workload allows on a daily basis at the site. And in the audience, we have three representatives from Salaber and Associates. We have Rob Salaber, who is the owner of the company. We have Bob LaRusso, who is a senior inspector. And we have Greg Smith, who is going to be our day-to-day representative on the site. And we're really happy to have them on their, on our team. Their references were excellent, they've got great experience, and we're really excited to have them as an extension of our, of our abilities in park planning. And so if you folks approve this construction management contract tonight, that will allow us to make sure that we can dedicate the proper amount of attention to this project and, you know, help us to bring this project to the community on time and on budget. And so if you have any questions, I'm here to help answer them.
Any questions from the board?
No, the packet was, I mean, was clear and all the information was there. And obviously, I think staff, it's, it's real important that staff feel confident that he'll be answerable to you, and you got to make sure you, you really can work well with him. So you look like you're thrilled with this. You need one.
I was very impressed by the, your portfolio of jobs completed. Some, some great places and facilities in the, in the region.
Yes.
So I'm, I, I think we got the right, the right people here.
All right, anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute a contract for construction management consultancy services in the amount of $249,500 with Salaber Associates Incorporated for the Cordova Pool Replacement Project.
Motion by Secretary Sloan, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right.
There you go, Laura, make it happen! Make it happen!
We'll move on to item G5.
Yes.
Thank you. Item G5 is to adopt Resolution 19/20-30 and authorize the General Manager to deed a portion of APN 072-2860-011 being transformed in fee to Lot 2349 MB7 to 68 Zinfandel JV LLC.
That was easy.
Do I get a woo or not? Okay.
That was a lot.
Yeah, what was it, did you write that?
This is not nearly as exciting as those other items. Tonight, we're bringing to you, it's really a problem-solving piece. We've been working for the last two years with a developer who is constructing an industrial center adjacent to one of our trails. And due to some fire comments, they're having to construct a driveway through our trail parcel. So going back and forth with our attorney, with the developer, we were struggling to come up with a solution that would keep us out of the road maintenance business. That's not what we do. So the simplest, cleanest solution was to take the parcel that, of what used to be trail and there we're transforming to driveway, and to actually deed that over to the developer. So that will no longer be our land. If there's truck traffic damage, if there are accidents, that is no longer our property. And this was advised to us to be the best direction for the district interest. That was advised to us by our attorney to do, to do so. So tonight, we're bringing this before you for your approval, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Yeah, my question about this one is, why is it necessary to deed the property rather than give them a permanent easement?
Because that developer is going to eventually probably leave. So what they'll do likely, this is, the development corporation comes from DNS development, they'll likely sell off that property into smaller lots and go away. And we, we, we would have an easement, but we would have no sort of hammer to, we would have no one to tie back to that to enforce them to actually pay for the repair. There's no HOA, there's, there's no entity that would be responsible for repairing. And this way, now 68 Zinfandel is tied to that. They, they own that little piece of land, and they will be responsible, or a subsequent property association will be responsible for repairing any damage that occurs.
Because that begs the question, when the developer goes away, you know, who owns that?
Well, now they'll own it. Now they'll, now they are owners.
No, I understand this, the intent is to have them own it, but then you just said eventually they'll go away, and if they go away...
They'll have to sell, they'll have to sell this piece of property, that's correct.
Probably with the development, smaller, but it won't be our responsibility.
It won't be our problem.
It'll fall back to us, yeah.
And this is why, we, you know, we talked about establishing some kind of fund for future maintenance, and it just was...
Don't want that.
We, it's a headache that we don't want. I mean, we certainly don't want to be responsible for what will surely be a trafficway with industrial traffic back and forth. So, so the trail will remain, and the, those trail corridors will still be our property, but that driveway will not be our property.
So Christina, it says here it's 46 feet long, long wide?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Or wide-long?
Yeah.
Explain to me exactly how, we're talking 46 feet long?
Long.
How wide?
And wide, I believe it's 20 feet.
Okay.
But that map, that parcel map would do, will, should show you the dimensions.
So we're not losing related to that, let's...
Not much, doesn't look much.
That was my question, yeah, that was just a...
So the...
There's 40.
Yeah. And the trail users will actually, because of the trail, the trail will be realigned to the curbs, that, the curb cuts that will be on either side of this driveway. So trail users will be directed to those curb cuts, which are accessible, and then there'll be a safe crossing at that intersection. That's how the engineers, the developers' engineers have proposed solving that crossing. We will be reviewing those improvement plans throughout the process and watching the construction and making sure that any damage to the trails as they're realigning it is repaired and brought back to its original condition. So we're, we're still going to be involved with 68 Zinfandel through the construction. But this piece was an important one to make sure that we're not responsible for that road.
Okay, do we, because it's going to be a, basically a pedestrian bike trail that's getting intersected, it's going to be cut into, are we, I don't know if we can or not, are we asking for any kind of stipulations where there's some kind of pedestrian walkway where the lights, you know, it lights up if somebody needs to go across it?
Currently, the proposal is that it's, there'll be a stop sign there at Baroque, where the driveway, but there's no proposal for a signalized kind of pedestrian... where the driveway, but there's no proposal for a signalized kind of pedestrian. At this time, it'll just be, it'll be a, I guess, a three-way stop or a four-way stop.
So there'll be a stop sign there?
Yes.
I know, you've seen those pedestrian walks. When you hit the button, it illuminates the the street, so people, that's all I was wondering.
Yeah, at this time, the proposal is for just cross, a crossing, a stop bar, and a stop sign.
Okay. So there'll be something to slow traffic down, they can't just tear through there?
Right.
Okay. All right. That's all questions. I have, anybody care to make a motion?
Only if Ms. Jones reads it again.
I move the board of directors adopt resolution 19/20-30 and authorize the general manager to deed a portion of APN 072-2860-011 being transformed in fee to lot 2349 MB7 to 68 Zinfandel JV LLC.
Good job.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel?
Second.
Second by Director Reyes. Roll call vote?
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Director Lineback?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
It's almost like you read a license plate number in there.
There you go. All right.
All right, so we will move on to, what are we moving on to? Is that it?
Board member, yeah.
Oh, wow. All right.
Board of Director.
All right, so we're moving on to board of directors items.
Thank you. Item H1A, and there was no training over the last period, so H1B is board member reports.
All right. Director Reyes, do you care to start?
Sure. Chair Yearwood, I enjoyed the Halloween trunk-or-treat at Hagan and really enjoyed doing it, what, with the Snoopy's and the kids and all this. But again, I just wanted to remind Chair Yearwood that we were going to say that we were going to look for a sign that said that we were, it was the trunk-or-treat by the board of directors for CRPD. And this would really, you know, I think we were, would would really be important. I know we've discussed it. I said to to Chair Yearwood, well, probably CRPD can provide us with some signage.
I provided all the the props, so...
Yeah.
Can somebody else take that part on?
Yeah.
And the car.
Oh, and the car, and the trunk, yes.
And the trunk, yeah. Well, we helped with the candy.
You did. You did a wonderful job.
And bringing the kids closer and closer and closer. So that was fun. And then the Fetterspill Park Community Outreach Meeting with all the wind and outdoor, it, I really, I really wanted to commend staff because the show of residents there, I did really, as as it's going a trend, Patrick, that people are feeling very comfortable to ask, to express whether they agree or not, whether there's a need. And I do do really appreciate the fact that you're able to answer truthfully. And that's real important. And I think I think we all appreciate it. I know that they were thrilled, the residents there were thrilled with the demolition, and that that was really a good presentation and a good showing of our outreach. And then the the last item I have was I went ahead and I attended the executive meeting of the CA California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members, executive meeting. This was on November 12th. And basically, they mentioned, they were discussing the fact that Jim Simpson, who is their executive director, was going to be leaving in a couple of months. I don't know who was was going to replace him, but and I think he was going to leave because it was time to spend more time with family or something like that, retirement. The other thing that they discussed a lot about was the CPRS conference in Long Beach in March. I believe it's like March 10th to 13th. And there was a lot of discussion on that because I guess we hold the the banquet at the same time. They were trying to find out where they do this. And basically, that was it. So it's interesting. It's really interesting to participate in that. But they are very appreciative that that I joined in. It is a conference call.
All right.
Thank you. That's it.
Director Lineback?
I don't have anything on there, but I did, in fact, attend a training at the county on November 13th for boards and commissions and committees of the county. And because I'm on the county oversight board, they invited me to that. And I would have to say that we've had sufficient training from our own Clerk Jones that I didn't really find out anything new.
Good job. Oh, that's great.
All right. Okay. All right. Move on to Secretary Sloan.
October 26th, I was also, I went to the Haunted, Haunted Hagan, that's what I call it. And I brought my camera and took a lot of great shots. And I really liked the, just the atmosphere. It was, and the the configuration was different. We had stuff on the grass, which was nice. We didn't use the the basketball courts this year. Everything was well-lit. I really appreciated it. The walkways were nice. Everyone loved it. I just, you know, commend our staff for a great event. It was well-attended. So woo-hoo.
There you go.
And then on October 29th, I attended the Fetterspill Outreach Meeting, which was also a great turnout of of residents and not huge, but the people who came were appreciative that that building was gonna not be there. It has been a problem attracting the wrong type of people. And some of the ideas I thought were very interesting. And so it's a possibility that we can find some funding for refurbishing the that area with something, maybe a park horse or something like that, something for the community that they can still go out and use that property. Because this kind of, because that's a park that's kind of like divided by street, and on the one side is more like the play area or big open space, and then you got the the other side that had has the play structure. And so it would just be kind of a neat place to put something there. On November 5th, I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association meeting. And a couple of comments came up, a tennis court, the the coach for Cordova High, and it might be fixed by now. But I guess when we had the issues with the ponds at Hagan, we cut off some electricity to the court, only not the high school property court, but the park court. So and that might be fixed by now, but that was a question that came up. And they did mention resurfacing of theirs, because I guess the the schools' courts are already resurfaced or had been resurfaced prior to, after ours were. Ours, our needs, our really need, it's it's a necessity, I think, because there were big cracks in the play area that could cause problems. So another one, I got a comment from the soccer people. Hardly ever I get comments from them because they love the having the, you know, Stone Creek is their their home court. But they were talking about possibly getting, enlarging the bathrooms. Right now, we have two stalls, two doors, and they want to see if there could be four, which I told them I have no idea if we could do that. So that'd be something that staff would have to look into. And Josh also came, is going to be approaching, hopefully soon, the cross-country guy to have some type of a tournament going on. I found out that a lot of, the big issue, I think, is is a lot of facilities, like gymnasium spaces. But I I found out another shortage that we have here in Rancho, and that's officiating and coaching. It seems like they, I heard that there are over 100 kids from the soccer league. They couldn't find coaches for them. And so they were left to find somewhere else for the kids to play. Yeah, I thought that was pretty shocking that there weren't enough coaches to go around. So that's something we need to consider when we start creating leagues, that we can create that, that part two, part of the puzzle. November 7th, I attended the State of the City, which was, I enjoyed it, I always enjoyed that. I think Michael was there with me, holding my hand, making sure I didn't get in trouble, taking photographs. Well, maybe you weren't holding my hand.
If I was holding your hand, I would have been walking around.
How could I take the?
He would have been sitting next to you.
He never did.
November 12th, I didn't put that on my thing, but I I did attend the Rancho Cordova, they had a draft arts and strategic plan that was put into place. And this is something that I think eventually it's going to be a partnership with the Park District because they're talking about creating facilities. And I think they're going to have to have programs to be put into these facilities. And I can't think of a better organization to help organize these, the programs and this kind of a of a movement that we're gonna, you know, it's it's a big project. And and I I don't know if we have someone's that from the Park District that goes to those meetings, but it's a, it's a big, beautiful, new civic center that's going to be put out there and with a lot of different facilities on it, which we need more facilities. That's the bottom line. On November 18th, I I attended the Breka Steering Committee meeting. And I hope you all can join us on Saturday, just to come out and watch how 60 volunteers can plant 18 trees in the park. Lunch will be served. But the questions that came up at the meeting were, do the, does a community have to go out and and water these, give them special care and watering to get these trees going? So I just basically told them that a lot of that's going to be spelled out by the Tree Foundation people who come out and give an extensive course on how to plant a tree. It's a, it's a, it's a real learning opportunity for the whole community. I know a lot of the board members have been to those things, and I was out at Dave Roberts Park, and I learned where the mouth of a tree was. It's not up there. It's it's down here. So then on, yesterday, I went to the Thanksgiving Potluck, which was really, really nice. I enjoyed it. Chair Yearwood was also there, holding my hand.
That's when I was holding your hand.
Yeah, that's when you're holding my hand. I guess that's about it for my report.
All right. Thank you, Secretary Sloan. Vice Chair Danzel?
Halloween at Hagan, always a fun event. It's nicer when Chair Yearwood's there to make sure that we set up everything correctly.
Holding your hand.
Because when he's not there, when he's not there, we don't get it quite right.
That first year was tough. I didn't even know what I was going to do.
Lots of kids, always a great event. You know, staff does, staff does their job and keeps it going, which is great. I decided to go off this month and go to a different type of meeting than one, one that we, most of us don't go to too often. I went and visited the the people who sit and listen to Matt Caddell willingly, willingly sit and listen to Matt Caddell. I sat with PMID this month just to see what, you know, what was going on. They've got some new members, wanted to see what the thought process was there, see how that organization is run. It's been a quite a few years since I've been to one of their meetings. They ask a lot of the same questions we do, which is nice. I mean, so it's, Matt gets to hear some of the same questions, you know, twice in a month. He's so, you know, he's already ready for our questions, which is nice, because their 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 president or chair, Bonnie, she, she, you know, she knows what's going on, and she's definitely asking the right questions, and she's got that organization running smoothly now. There for a while, it was not. It was, there was different areas that just seemed to be out for themselves. Now it seems like that organization is very much about the district, which is nice. Even though they're they're districted, they actually look at other things that are going on in the district, just not their area, which is very, very nice to see. So I, it was good. I will be back, Bonnie. I will find some other time to get there, especially if there's something on the board agenda that I want to hear Matt talk about. I'll really make sure I, that way I can hear it more than once and make sure I understand it by the time I get here. And the last thing on mine is the Cordova Golf Course. I know most of you went out a couple of months ago and saw the golf course right before the golf carts disappeared and the old set. My mother recently has decided to take up golf, and I've got some time I can go play with her on my days off. So that's where, obviously, I'm going to go hit golf balls. There's, like we talked about, when we talked about possible closure on the golf course, I've got my choices of golf courses as well. Taker one, it's it's close, it's inexpensive, and it's easy to play. It's like Director Reyes said, it's a short course. So we've been going out once a week and playing, playing golf. And I can say I don't like our course in the fact that I've played it for about 15 years, and I knew how to play the greens. But we authorized a new greens-cutting mower, and now they're too darn fast. So I'm having to relearn how to play our, play our course. So the course is looking really nice. The, a couple of weeks ago, when we, about three, four weeks ago now, we just got, it was, I walked in the day after the carpet had been laid in the, in the pro shop. It smells new. It looks new. It's not cluttered. It's definitely getting, getting to where we want it. And now hearing the the addition of, you know, a concessionaire out there, that's definitely going to help. It's, but, you know, if you get another chance to go out there now that there's new golf carts out there, things like that, go see it, because it's definitely changed since the last time. I know you guys were out there, so.
All right.
What day do you play?
Thursdays, 10 a.m.
All right. Okay, well, I guess it's my turn. I as well attended Halloween at Hagan, and I think we're all in agreement, we do need a sign of some sort. There's already plans in my mind for expanding it and doing something different next year, since it was very popular for people wanting to take pictures. People who took pictures in the daylight came back before they left to take pictures at night. So it does look a lot different at night than it does in the daylight.
I do want to commend you and thank you for for the whole setting. Because it really, you know, it was nice. We'd get kids coming by, and they'd start off far away, and then they'd get closer and closer. And next thing you know, you know, they were looking in the trunk and and Michael standing there and saying, "The candy's here."
I put an empty bucket in there just because it has...
But they loved it, and they were taking pictures.
And they kept going towards that.
Taking pictures. Love that.
It was very small, too, by the way.
Thank you. You do a good job.
Well, thank you.
Yep, very much.
I'll see if I can't find some new stuff for next year. I'm sure I will. So, so yes, always a great event. I have to admit, I never get into the inside of it. I trust it was wonderful, as you said. I'm sure it was. Nobody left mad or anything. But yeah, pretty much the trunk-or-treat occupies my time, so. And let's see, what else? Oh, yes, the Fetter, Fetterspill Park Community Outreach Meeting on the 29th. It was a blustery day there in the Hundred Acre Woods. It was nice to, it was a small crowd, but they had a lot of good questions, a lot of good suggestions. That's the park right down the street from where I grew up. So even though it's sad that the pool's gone, it's sad that there's no real practical use for keeping that building, it will be nice to have it out of there and start giving the park a kind of a fresh, new look and kind of a blank canvas, so to speak, for us to make some plans in the future to do something there. Let's see, I also attended the State of the City, where I did not hold Secretary Sloan's hand. But, you know, things are moving along. It was nice. They did a nice little presentation about why the city of Rancho Cordova is is great. And the first thing that was up was how many nice parks are in the city? So, let's see here. Oh, when I attended the Sacramento LAFCO Special District Advisory Committee, almost got the, almost got as long an acronym as you do. But on November 12th, we had moved it from the Halloween week, because it was their monthly California LAFCO general meeting or something like that. So let's see, we did talk about a few things. Let me see what I wrote down here. So let's see, we did talk about a few things, let me see what I wrote down here. No, we didn't talk about cemeteries this time. They, they did bring up that they still need some land, but they moved on rather quickly. There, they did, Kay Jones wanted to let, 48 of the 50, 48 of the, I think it's 58, I can't remember if it's 58 or 55, I can't read my own writing. However many counties you have in California, 48 of them attended the, the state conference. There was a conversation about districts instead of at-large elections. Most people in the room said they were going to those, except for one lone holdout. I don't remember who it was, I know it was a Park District who was throwing caution to the fore winds and was going to say, "We'll address it when the time comes." And we all tried to tell them, "Don't wait for the letter to come, because it comes with the bill too." So, and let's see, the voting is still going on for the open spot, for the Commissioner in Office Number Six. That'll wrap up on the 21st and then I believe he said within about 72 hours, they would notify everybody who the, who was the winners. I foolishly asked, "What happens if there's a tie?" And Don goes, "There's never been a tie." I said, "Well, I'm sorry, I probably just jinxed you, there'll probably be a three-way tie or something." So, yeah, you know. And what was the last thing I was going to bring up? Oh, that, that is also now, where do I, am I group A or whatever? I'm up, that, my spot, that, those people are all up for election this year, reelection this year, or new folks or whatever. So they're going to get through this before they notify the clerks of the next election that needs to be, nominations need to be proposed and elections held for, so. Yes, they didn't want to confuse and muddy the waters by starting that process before the other one was finished, so. But that is all. I did attend yesterday, it was a very nice event and again, did not hold Secretary Sloan's hand at any time. I don't know, you, was not I, so. All right, well that's all I've got, so I guess we will move on to, because we don't have any elections or anything or appointments to do H2, so we'll move on to I, comments by the staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you, I'm going to turn it right over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you Clerk Jones, happy to hear that your voice is still doing well. Just some highlights from the past month. Just please note, the administrative offices will be closed November 27th, 28th and 29th for the holiday. CSDA Board Clerk Conference was held this past month and our clerk attended, it was in Monterey. And she has some great information that she received at that. And we're looking to implement some of the things and we're excited to possibly look for one of the presenters at that conference as a potential person to do a training with the board with content that Danielle had been, you know, at that conference session and felt it was possibly a good facilitator for our upcoming workshop or meetings related to our goals for next year. Michael just mentioned the LAFCO Special District Commissioners ballots, November 20th, after November 21st, we should have more clarity on that. It's nice to report overall targets are within budget of plus 4% and no major concerns to report at this part of the fiscal year. And 10 projects are active and all under budget year-to-date. The audit for fiscal year 2018-19, the auditors began the site visit field work by testing the financial representation of the account balances, fee schedules, payroll, minutes and policy changes, and no significant findings through the first round. Next is the technical financial audited report statements, management and discussion analysis, MDNA, and verification and follow-up of confirmation. So that's going well, it's underway. And park planning and development, I wanted to bring to the attention that we will actually have to be removing some trees from the property at Hagan. The district has contracted with Davy Trees to remove 20 trees from the future pool site. The tree removal is needed to accommodate the new pool grading and entry plan surrounding the concrete deck. The required fire lane clearance as well. The work is scheduled for December 2019, ahead of the start of the pool general contract work. And the tree removal has been approved through the city of Rancho Cordova's conditional use permit and building permit process. The city stated that mitigation for the tree removal has already been satisfied by the district's numerous tree planting partnerships with the city of Sacramento Tree Foundation, by the city over the past several years. For 204 trees have been planted in the district parks and in the villages as infant del streetscapes. Three more tree plantings events scheduled between November 23rd, 2019 and March 28th, 2020, will add 52 more trees to parks. The planning department will work with the communications division to post information about the tree removal on the website and social media prior to the start of work. I just wanted to point that out, because trees are a very important asset that we have, but it is a necessary thing we need to do to accommodate this pool project. So just note that that is something that we're needing to do. Also, Veterans Park repairs for the court surfacing and resealing of the parking lot is complete. Asphalt patching of the Cordova Golf Cart path has also been completed. And a prefabricated restroom for Gavala Ranch Park has been ordered. Electrical and plumbing engineering will be performed by Stanton Engineering and landscape architect James is providing the site design and coordinating construction documents. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jill for the Parks and Recreation Department report.
Thank you. I don't know if you noticed when you were over for Halloween at Hagan, but we do have a new bridge that we needed to repair. The other ones we'll get to as well in the, in the next couple of years. But one of the bridges, the northeast walking bridge, was repaired, it looks fantastic, it was done in-house. The Parks Crew just knocked it out of the park, so we appreciate that new bridge there. It's nice and safe for people to be able to walk over. We also got new carpet at the Hagan Community Center in our building number two, where the administrative offices, where recreation and, and parks have their, have their offices located. So we have new carpet there, as well as the golf course, like Chair, that Vice Chair Danzel was talking about. We do have that new carpet. We also cut a new door into Marco and Vanessa's office. So now they have two ways to get out of that office, which makes me a very happy camper that there's another way out. So new door, new carpet over there. Like you mentioned, Vice Chair is that, you know, we're trying to make sure that when we're ordering, you know, merchandise for the golf course, we're being very thoughtful about what we're ordering, since most people don't buy a lot of merchandise at golf courses. So we're being smart about that moving forward. So I'm glad that you saw those improvements. The, the, the other part of the golf course does the, we have a new logo on the awning. So that, that awning had ripped in one of the winds maybe a year ago. And so what we decided to do is not place a new logo on it until we knew we were going to be keeping the golf course under operation. And then we decided to do the new logo. So Katie worked with a company to get the new logo on the awning and I think it looks fantastic. The Hideout. So Brandy has been working in collaboration with the Folsom-Cordova Community Partnership. And they're going to provide sessions on socio-emotional learning and fostering interpersonal relationships with the Hideout teens. Their first session was held on October 28th, 28th, which included an introduction and team-building games. So the community partnership collaboration will be held one day a week for 10 weeks for 60-minute sessions. And I think this is just a great added bonus to the Hideout and what we're trying to do to make sure that we take care of teens and give them a safe space to come after school each day. So I'm really proud of, of the team over there that we were able to, to pull that together. So thanks to Brandy and her crew. Over at the Mayther Sports Complex, we did start our Fall Youth Basketball League. And you know how passionate I am that we have youth basketball now within the district. And so this is our fall season, so this is season number two. We had a spring season, but we now have a fall season and we had 116 players, so it's growing. We'll have another season coming up in spring. And Nina and her staff are also working with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District to get some space within their facilities, so we can expand the program. And it's not going to just be at Mayther, so that's some exciting news coming forward. Special events, we had two major special events. The Mad had her tea party, as well as the Halloween at Hagan. Coming up events, for your special event invitation, we have the tree planting, which is this Saturday at Riviera East Park. So we have the SAC Tree Foundation, Breka and the CRPD staff, that will be planting trees from 8:45 to 12. We have hosting the, the Cordova Community Council is hosting the Christmas tree lighting at the Village Green on Sunday, December 1st, from 4:00 to 7:30. We will have a table and a booth there, so come on by and say hi. We have another tree planting, it's like the year of tree plantings, that's also hosted by the SAC Tree Foundation and CRPD at White Rock Community Park on Saturday, December 7th, from 8:45 to 12. And then Jim just let me know too, there'll be another tree planting at Rosemont in January. So I'll give you those dates when we have them as well. And then we have Breakfast with Santa over at the Neil Orchard Senior Activities Center on Saturday, December 14th. We're going to have three seedings. If you're interested in attending, just give that crew a call over at the, at the senior center and they'll get you signed up. It's always a fun event. And then we also have the Holiday Recognition Party over, this is for the staff and for board members over at the Hagan Community Center, Building 1, on Thursday, December 19th at 11:30. So if you want to come over and have some lunch, please join us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any comments, oh, Director Reyes.
Chair Yearwood, I had some questions for our General Manager's report. Just wanted to get a little bit of the updates. I see, and I know we've had some challenges with, with our relationships with the RCAAs as to whose role, who's, what we do. And I see that you met with them and that you were able to discuss the direction, they were able to discuss the direction and clarify roles. How did that go?
Actually, it was not the RCAA group as much as it was a group of, it was myself, Jill, a, the President of the RCAAs, as well as City Manager, Peter from the School District, who's the Athletic Director, and Shelley Blanchard. We all sat around and discussed how the RCAA was going. And some of the things that came out of that discussion was just how are some of the systems in place for those league presidents to allocate fields to them? Is it a process that is working for them? Is it a process that we need to tweak? Is there a way for us to be a little bit more collaborative in terms of the resources we're providing to that group? So it wasn't the RCAA group of presidents of the leagues, it was more of a higher-level staff to kind of have an umbrella over how is it going and what are some of the things that we can do better to support the RCAAs? And so it was a good meeting. It was something that we had decided that we were most likely going to want to meet on a quarterly basis at that level. And just to make sure that we are all understanding which each other's agency's roles are within the framework of that RCA, which might have gotten a little loose. So we're trying to clarify the lane that we're in, as well as the School District and also the RCA and the expectations of those league presidents in interfacing with the resources that we have.
Great, and we do have a staff that attends, that represents the, our district at the RCAAs, right?
Absolutely, we have Nina signer, who attends all of the RCA meetings and Jill has in the past. And so yes, of course, we have representation, because our role in essence is to make sure that the resources they need to be successful in offering their, their activities is something that we're aware of and we can filter through the, our processes to allocate that space for their needs.
And so some of the, the information that Director Sloan is bringing in, I mean, staff has probably had an opportunity to report you, very important.
Yeah, Nina gives us a report after those meetings and it's filtered to the appropriate staff to follow up with those that have questions or comments or concerns, yes.
Yeah, so we don't have to wait to hear about it, that's great, thank you. And then I was interested in the proposals for the city of Rancho on the Mills Special Station project?
Sure. So it was an honor actually to be a part of the city's process to determine what would be a possible solution for their Mills Station District, they're calling it, which is once before, it's, it's the property on Folsom Boulevard, it's the 10-acre property. So what they did is they sent out an RFQ-type of process to potential developers to give them ideas of what they would like to do with that opportunity. And they received eight applications. All of them were very, you know, highly qualified. And this process was that different stakeholders in the community, us included, as well as Folsom Lake College was there, RT was there, some developers were there that were not applicants of this process, all sat down, reviewed all of the applications that were submitted and then came to the table and prioritized what we felt was the best kind of go-forward for the city council to possibly consider. So it was a bit of a committee that they created for the review of that. And then those recommendations of the top three will go forward in presentations to the city council at a later date, so that they can consider what, you know, they're proposing as what their development plan might be.
Is, is this that ten, that property that Director Sloan was saying, like a community center or that, right across?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much abutting to Folsom Lake College satellite.
Empty, yeah.
Correct, it's the 10-acre property that they purchased, the city purchased within the last year. They're looking to develop it and they're open to suggestions of what that would be.
Okay, great, wonderful, that's the one they called like the civic center and then now it's possibly.
Originally, they wanted it as a civic center concept. But as the proposals came in, they're being open-minded to what the possibilities are. So I think it's actually, it was a great process to be a part of. I had not been through a process similar to that and I really appreciated the way that the city facilitated that. It was a really good model for us to even consider going forward in including stakeholders that may be touched by that, you know, type of whatever the development will end up being. So I, I thought it was a very thoughtful thing and I was really appreciative of the fact that we were included in that.
That's wonderful. And then the only other thing was you had the Soilborne, I mean, it, it has something to do with the Williamson property and, you know, that movement, we've had community outreach, so how, what, what's a good?
So we, we had a conversation with Sean, the Executive Director at Soilborne. And just to revisit their interest in being a part of the project, he restated his interest in the, in making sure that he's supporting us. We have in the design that we're proposing, the conceptual designs that we have, there's a, an orchard concept that we have. And there are dwarf trees with dwarf roots and so he was, "Oh, that was entertaining." But also a part of that was there was a need for a potential community garden with that particular property. We were not going to develop that in Phase 1, we were going to leave space available for future, potential of it being a community garden. And we wanted to present that to Sean to see if that was something that he would have a capacity in managing down the road. At this time, no, and so we were wise not to program that. But we'll have space available in the future for that to be a reality, if it becomes something that they can sustain and maintain in the future. So there was that conversation with Williamson. But in addition to that, Christina and I are actually going to be meeting with Soilborne to discuss their future parking lot plans, which has been on the table for the last five, 10 years in terms of expanding their capacity to serve the community over at Soilborne. So those are discussions we'll be having very soon in terms of how we can support their ability to expand their programming out there.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, everybody else good? All right, I guess we'll move on to item J, informational items?
Yes, we have the articles there and your calendar as well.
All right, well I guess that means we will move on to item K, closed session.
Thank you, we have two items in closed session. We have two items in closed session this evening. Item K1 is a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Name of case is Piper Henderson. Item K2 is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957. Title, General Manager.
All right. We'll adjourn to closed session at 8:00 PM.